And we ask God now that you would grace us with your wisdom and give us guidance, Lord, as we look at the agenda and the cases before us. Grateful to be able to serve this beautiful community in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Donnelly? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Committee member and Serpe?
Here.
Committee member Craig?
Here.
Committee member Winn?
Present.
Chairman Kurlander?
Here.
Committee member Brunswick?
Present and accounted for.
Committee member Donnelly?
Here.
Committee member Worster?
Here.
This time I'll ask for any public comment. Hearing none. I have been told that Mr. Theriaque, who is counsel to the city, is available only for a short period of time. And therefore, I would -- I'm going to call the mine case first so that he can participate. Now, having said that and calling the case, I'm going to move. I'm going to move to continue the case. And the reason is, I received the materials yesterday. Thousand pages of materials, a strange code to me, and they asked in less than 24 hours to come. In fairness to the applicant, in fairness to the citizens of the community, I think we should take the time and be prepared for this. And so, I make a motion to continue this matter until the December 17 meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Same thing. I didn't see the email until yesterday and didn't get a chance to get over here to pick up the packet and go. Obviously, not enough time to go through it. I just got it this morning.
Is there a...
And I feel similarly. I did get my packet yesterday, and I made a heroic effort to it. But we're being asked to apply an unfamiliar code, and I haven't begun to have a time to read the comprehensive plan of Lead County, and I don't know it as I know our own. So, I can't possibly do my job of a quasi-judicial review based on the law if I haven't had time to really review the law. And I had no idea this case was coming this time. I knew the other case was, but until this kind of landed on us. I wholly support that.
Any further comments? Hearing none. I'll call the questions. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Committee member Winn?
Yes.
Chairman Kurlander?
Yes.
Committee member Brunswick?
Yes.
Committee member Donnelly?
Yes.
Committee member Worster?
Yes.
Committee member and Serpe?
Yes.
Committee member Craig?
Yes.
The matter is continued until December 17. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The second case is the Tassone Mixed Use Plan Development. Thank you, Mr. Theriaque.
Mr. Chairman, you wanted to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
Oh, thank you very much. My bad. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the October 15, 2019, meeting?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's approved. Okay.
Do you want me to square out all witnesses?
Please.
At this time, anyone who intends to give testimony regarding this matter or anyone in the public who intends to speak at any public comment, please stand, raise your right hand, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
You want me to wait for you?
No, no. Do you want staff to do an introduction, or would you prefer to let the applicant go first?
The applicant proceed.
Sarah Spector with Retsal &amp; Andrews on behalf of the applicant. We are here today to present to you a request for an amendment to the Tassone MPD. We have a slideshow for you to present what that request is specifically. We do have the project team here today. We do have Chris Salemi, who's with Aileron Investment Management. He is here on behalf of the applicant. We also have our experts that will be testifying to you today. We have planners Alexis Crespo and Lindsay Robin with Waldrop Engineering and James Inc., also with Waldrop Engineering.
Before you proceed, I have a question for Ms. Crespo. Are you still representing the city on any matters, and do you intend in the future to represent the city?
No, sir. We're not under -- Waldrop Engineering is no longer under contract with the city for work on behalf of the government.
Okay.
And it's understood, as long as we're doing private work in the city, it would be inappropriate to do any work for the city.
Right. That's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, continue.
Perfect. I was going to go over the fact that two of our witnesses today were previously tendered as experts, but I wonder if Mr. Rooney needs to be here for that? Perfect. So, of our project team, Ms. Crespo and Mr. Inc. have both been tendered as experts before you, and I would ask that they are accepted as witnesses today, as experts today. We do have their resume, which we can submit into the record, and we can also have them give you their qualifications. But I thought since they were already tendered previously that we can forego the formalities. But I'll leave that up to Mr. Rooney.
Up to you.
Yeah, it's up to -- the burden of establishing your experts is yours.
Whatever you want to do is...
To accept them. I'm not challenged.
I don't think we...
Oh, you're not challenged? Okay, perfect. Then we'll go with that. And then we'll address Ms. Robin when we get to her presentation in a short while. So, we've provided here an aerial map so that you can have a better idea of where exactly this project is in the overall scheme of the Tassone MPD. The yellow outlined parcel is the entire Tassone property. The little red area, I don't think there is there. Yes. This red area right down here is all that we're talking about. It's a three-acre parcel of the entire, out of the entire MPD that we are talking about. We do have a close-up here that shows you the parcel broken down. What we're talking about today is only parcel O. However, right now, parcel O and the parcel marked "Future Development" is one combined parcel that's three acres large. When, if the request is approved, we will be going in for a lot split, and parcel O, a 1.3-acre parcel, will be split from the overall parent parcel that's three acres. So, everything regarding the request today is only applicable to parcel O. So, what we are asking is to amend the schedule of uses that's attached to the master concept plan, to allow for auto parts store on only parcel O. Parcel O is owned, as we will get into later, within the commercial area. Auto parts store is one of the uses that's not listed that we're asking to include now. We're also asking to correct a historical mapping error that Ms. Robin will go over in her presentation.
So, in 2003?
Yes.
The city specifically removed?
Correct.
Auto parts store from this land use classification?
With a list of other auto uses.
Where is our authority to overrule the city?
And that's what we're going to get to with our expert testimony today. What we would provide to you is evidence of changed circumstances over the years, as well as a change in your code that has addressed those issues. So, that's what we will be providing today. So, we will be giving a planning framework and property overview. That will be Ms. Robin. We're going to talk about the proposed auto parts store and present to you the site-specific MCP for parcel O. We're going to go over the comprehensive plan compliance and land development code compliance and conclude by referring back to the staff report. So, with that, I'm going to pass it off to Ms. Robin. And... Yes. So, as I had mentioned, Ms. Robin has not been tendered as an expert before you before, so I would ask that she -- we do have her resume. I'd also ask that she tell you a little bit about her experience that would allow you to consider her an expert.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much.
Good morning.
I have presented before the Benita Springs LPA before. I've also presented before your city council. I've worked on various land development code amendments for the city, very closely with staff and everybody. And I've also assisted on some ear amendment items as well. I'm the chair of the city's Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Advisory Committee, and I just respectfully request to be qualified as an expert in planning.
So, am I understanding that you're currently doing work for the city?
No, sir. I was just stating I've done work for the city before. I'm familiar with your codes and your comp plan.
And the committee that you're on is a voluntary position, not one that you're compensated for?
Correct. Yeah.
Would that, would there be any objection to accepting her as an expert?
No objection.
Okay, perfect.
Please proceed. Thank you. Okay, good morning. Sarah had described previously, can you guys hear me? As Sarah has described previously, the subject parcel, parcel O, is approximately 1.3 acres in size. It's parcel O, and it receives legal access from Old 41 and River Rock Boulevard through the cross-access from Dollar General. The site is cleared, and it's partially vegetated, as you can see on the aerial here. And it is located within a commercial tract of the Tassone MPD or Mixed Use Plan Development. I'll be referring to it as MPD. Oops, sorry. So, the Tassone MPD was approved in 2003 pursuant to zoning resolution 0316. It is approximately 513 acres in size, and is permitted for the development of 1,400 dwelling units and 90,000 square feet of commercial uses. And it's safe to say that the plan development is substantially built out today. This is a future land use map showing the property within the general commercial future land use category, and the proposed use is consistent with the overall intent of this future land use category. The current zoning map is shown here with the subject property highlighted by this blue square I just added on. And as you can see, it is within both the C1 and the MPD zoning districts. Our proposed zoning map here shows the entire parcel within the MPD zoning district. As part of this amendment application, we are correcting a historic mapping error, ensuring that all parcels within the plan development are included in the legal description of the MPD, as was the case in 2003. It was intended by the zoning approval. So, we're just kind of helping the city correct that mapping error. And if there's a pointer on here, is that what this big button is? Yes. Oh, cool. The property is right here that we're -- it's just a slither right here that was excluded out of the legal description, and through this amendment, we're just simply adding it into the MPD and kind of trying to fix that little error there. Okay. So, here, I'm going to go through the surrounding land uses. To our north, we have the commercial tract. It's also within the Tassone MPD, and you have your Dollar General directly adjacent to us. And as you go further north across River Rock Boulevard, you have more commercial uses you'll see there in red. To our northeast, we have the multifamily and single-family residential within the Hawthorne To our southeast, we have two-family and single-family residential. Directly south of us, we have vacant commercial. And to our west, we have the Old 41 right-of-way and also a tract of vacant commercial. This here is the proposed master concept plan, page 1. So, what we've done here is I've circled where the property is located, and we've added a note here to reference the reader to sheet 2 of the site-specific master concept plan for the parcel O. And here, I'm just going to walk you through our site-specific master concept plan quickly. We are proposing an auto parts store and surface parking, of course. To our north, we've got a 15-foot-wide type-B buffer. And directly adjacent to the Hawthorne Community, we've got a 25-foot-wide drain easement that does not overlap. We have a 5-foot-wide type-A buffer adjacent to our Dollar General, a 15-foot-wide type-D buffer along the Old 41 right-of-way frontage. And we have no buffer here between the two tracks. I'll get into that in a minute on the deviation slide here. But what I'm highlighting in this slide is the 25-foot-wide Public Works easement. That was something that Public Works had requested us to provide, and we are doing that for them. Also, you'll note both points of access here. We have our direct access, which most people will be entering from, which is onto Old 41. And also, we have the cross-access through River Rock Boulevard from the Dollar General land use there. And both of these access points that I'm highlighting on this slide today are approved on the Tassone master concept plan. So, we're abiding by that as well. So, just a quick overview of the O'Reilly Auto Parts Store, the, and how it will function. It will function just like any other retail store you've ever seen. It's going to function like a retail store. There will be no onsite installation. There are no service bays. The only activities that will be permitted, which are strictly limited per condition 2, as you've seen in the staff report, are the ability to replace windshield wipers, light bulbs, and car batteries.
Give me one second.
Yes, sir.
Counselor, under our land development code, is auto parts store defined? The question is raised that the current, the current intent is not to have bays or anything. But if the statute defines it as permitting bays...
I would prefer to let staff answer that question because I think they're going to be dealing with that particular issue in their presentation.
Okay.
If that'd just be helpful. They may can add it now if it's helpful for context as Ms. Robin is going for.
It is not defined. An auto repair service station would be different than an auto parts store.
I couldn't find it, but... Continue, please. Thank you.
Okay, so, as I was saying, there will be, this will function just like a retail store that you're used to going into and purchasing items. This has no onsite installation, has no service bays. We're strictly limited by condition 2 to just replacing windshield wipers, light bulbs, and automotive batteries. Also, what I'm pointing out here is the color scheme. So, the applicant has provided earth-tone color scheme to comply with the Benita Land Development Code, which, as we all know, does not allow those primary colors. But as you may have seen in O'Reilly Auto Parts Store if you're driving around, it is that bright red color. That's their main color. But the applicant has agreed here to provide a more neutral, earth-tone color to comply with city standards. And we're just pointing out that color here. And as I had briefly referenced before, our deviation, we have one deviation we're requesting, and this really came out of a request by Public Works to provide them that access easement to maintain the Rosemary Canal. So, in lieu of providing a 5-foot-type-A buffer, the applicant is providing Public Works with a 25-foot access easement to the Rosemary Canal for maintenance purposes. So, it's understood that Public Works, excuse me, Public Works desires this location because of its access point that I discussed earlier, which I can highlight here, that little access here. So, it just makes it easy for them to go up. Maintaining the canal involves various equipment, and they need that clear space in order to get in and out without any trouble. 15 feet is going to be provided on parcel O, and the remainder 10 feet is to be provided on the future development tract, which our property owner has agreed to do. And now, I'm going to turn it over to, and I also do want to note, sorry, that staff is recommending approval of this deviation. And now, I'm going to turn it over to Alexis Crespo. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. And my presentation will focus a little bit more on the crux of the issue, which is the addition of this specific use that was removed in 2003 from the list of uses, and discussion on the staff report regarding the compatibility of this use based upon changed conditions in 2003, both in terms of the site, what has changed in the overall area, and then what has changed in your land development code that make this appropriate and consistent with your evaluation criteria of the land development code, as well as the comprehensive plan. And I'll start with just our community outreach efforts. This is, we're going to hit on this a lot. Your land development code has evolved significantly since 2003, and one of the great things about it is you have a very robust community outreach program where an applicant is required to go not once but twice to the community before we come here today in order to present any request to folks within 500 feet of the property. Because we are a substantially built-out MPD, we not only went 500 feet from our property line, we noticed all 830 property owners in Tassone. We had two neighborhood meetings as required by your code. We had two people at the first meeting and four at our follow-up meeting in October. And the discussion points there were the general kind of discussion on traffic and commercial uses associated with traffic and how they would be entering the site through the cross-access easement and then also on US 41. They had concerns with a lot of the restaurants that had built up in the commercial tracks along Old 41 in their MPD. So, when you go to the north of River Rock Boulevard, there are several kind of mom-and-pop restaurants that we at Waldrop Engineering like to frequent. Good restaurants, but it has created a lot of traffic due to trip generation associated with that use and also some of the noise and garbage associated with it. So, we did hear about that, that in general, they understood the retail nature of the auto parts store we were requesting, understood we were willing to limit it very strictly through this application, and we're glad that there was not going to be additional restaurants proposed on the site. So, that was the majority of the comments received at these meetings. So, getting into compatibility and the removal of this use. I cannot speculate as to why this use was removed in 2003. I was not in the room. We have the written minutes available from the clerk's office, which I believe were included in your package. There was no audio. There was no videotape. So, beyond reading the minutes and applying my professional planning opinion to those minutes, I can't tell you exactly why, but we do know that the discussion was auto-oriented uses along Old 41 could create aesthetic impact, so they're not usually very attractive. And that was discussion on gas stations, car washes, auto service, and repair as well as auto parts store. So, aesthetics, and then the compatibility with residential uses that were a part of this overall MPD. So, a lot of times, car washes and gas stations don't make great neighbors with single-family residential. And so, we can derive that from the meeting minutes. And then, we do know that in the motion, the decision was to remove all auto-oriented uses as a package. So, it wasn't, it wasn't that auto parts store on its own was targeted and removed. It was, let's get rid of the audio-oriented uses on Old 41 because of aesthetics and because we're not sure how this would impact residential uses in the area. So, I feel it's safe to make those presumptions based upon the record we have in place. And so, what we want to walk you through in terms of aesthetics compatibility is that there have been changed conditions since 2003, almost 17 years later, in the nature of an auto parts store. If you remember the Napa Auto Parts Store from the 90s, that was, that was a little bit of a different feel than your Auto Zones and the O'Reilly's package that we're going to present to you today. So, it's gotten much more retail in nature, and they've eliminated service bays and a lot of the more intensive aspects of that use. So, the use has changed. Your land development code has improved, and I'm proud, as Mr. Kurlander noted, to have worked with the city on upgrading your commercial building design standards about three years ago, creating chapter 3 and chapter 4 supplementary regulations for auto-oriented uses. Our office helped your staff make sure that these uses are needed in neighborhoods, but we need to make them attractive so that we're protecting character in Benita Springs. So, your code is a lot better than it was in 2003. And then, when you add PD conditions, we feel we've entirely addressed aesthetics compatibility raised there. We also know today that Tassone is built out. We know they've installed buffers. They've installed walls. We have the benefit of knowing how that community has grown and built out in the existing conditions and how our use could interface with that community. And in '03, it was just a bubble plan on a piece of paper. And then, further that, we've given you a site-specific plan of how this use can fit on this 1.3-acre parcel in terms of buffers, setbacks, existing surrounding uses, access to answer all the questions that the '03 council had no way of knowing how that, those types of uses could be placed on this property in a way that would be consistent with your land development code, consistent with your comp plan. And we have all those things in place now. So, that's what we want to lay out for you today. And so, we want to start with what is compatibility. I won't read that all aloud, but compatibility doesn't mean you have to have two exactly similar uses next to each other. It means two uses should not communicate harmful negative impacts to each other. Differing uses can coexist, but they have to be done in a way where they're not communicating noise impacts, light impacts, visual impacts, traffic impacts. So, we do have a fairly tight list of what those negative impacts can be, and you have a code and a comprehensive plan that walks through how sites can be designed when uses do differ in order to ensure compatibility in these areas. So, this is an existing O'Reilly's, O'Reilly Auto Parts Store. It was just developed in the Cape, very similar to the architecture we showed you in our elevation. Again, hitting on the low-intensity retail nature of this use, the FAR proposed, or Florida Area Ratio, or Measure of Intensity, is .13, whereas the comprehensive plan allows an intensity of 1.2. So, this is a low-intensity use in relation to your comprehensive plan and very retail in terms of its appearance. This, I believe in, again, in my professional planning opinion, when you take the list of uses removed, car wash, those are loud. Those have big doors that open up to areas and have a lot of visual impacts on the roadway. Gas stations have call boxes and are open to all hours of night. Those are very different than a retail auto parts store. If I, if I had been approached by an applicant seeking to add one of those more intensive auto-oriented uses, and we looked at those minutes, I think I would have very different advice to provide them in terms of should they apply for this application. When we look at auto parts store and the retail nature of it compared to those other uses removed, I feel that there's very strong reasoning for why this is now appropriate. And along with that, Chris looked at all the uses that are currently allowed today without, without any zoning approvals needed. We could go straight to development order and build on this site today. And he said, I want to do an O'Reilly Auto Parts Store. I'm willing to condition this in a very strict way to provide the surety to the city that that's what I intend to do. So, let's go through this list, and let's, let's get rid of anything we don't need so they know we're operating in good faith here. And so, these are all the lists, listed uses that we are proposing to eliminate, take off the books for this parcel, should we have the support of the zoning board and council to move forward. So, we're getting rid of packaged store, consumption on premise. The big one is restaurants. We heard from our community meeting, they weren't in favor of those, and we know from a traffic standpoint, those generate a lot more trips than this type of retail establishment. So, those are outlined in your staff report, and we do hope that helps in making this decision, that we're really trying to be reasonable and pare down more intensive uses approved today without any additional approvals.
So, what, we're talking about parcel O.
Yes, sir.
And is that 1.3 acres?
Yes, sir.
And you're going to put it on a parts store. So, what's the impact of removing uses from that parcel? You're putting, you can come in here and say, I want to remove everything else. Does it have any meaning? You're putting an auto parts store. So, what's the meaning of removing other things unless you're going to put other things on that 1.3-acre parcel?
You could perceivably fit additional uses depending on the ultimate size of the store, and it would provide a great precedent for when a future development tract comes in and tries to amend any uses as well. in and tries to amend any uses as well. We don't have control over the other parcels, so we can only commit to what we can control.
Right, and you control that 1.3 acres. But are you asking that we eliminate those uses for other than that 1.3?
No, it would indicate if the council would move forward with this request, they could ensure to the community that a restaurant would never be built on the site. If this is ultimately denied, then we don't get the auto parts store, but there can be a McDonald's there. I think that's the value of eliminating the uses. If this is approved, you could ensure that this site will not be developed with those uses. That would be the benefit to the city. And redevelopment. Sorry.
The site is already prohibited from a restaurant, as it is today, right? Because of the exclusions that were made back in 2003 by the council.
A restaurant could be developed there today. Today, you couldn't do the auto parts store, you could not do...
Do fast food?
You could do fast food.
You can correct me if I'm wrong, but looking back at the original list of prohibited uses, I thought it very clear that fast food uses were excluded.
Fast food is not on there for drive-throughs for any permitted use, so if it fit one of those criteria of restaurants, if it was a full-service restaurant and added a drive-through for that, it wouldn't necessarily be fast food, such as an actual sit-down restaurant that many people attend, like a Guanamia, and then they have the drive-through component.
So is a McDonald's not fast food because it has restaurant inside and a drive-through?
I believe defined McDonald's as fast food. McDonald's would be fast food.
But they have a restaurant as well as the drive-through?
They do, but a sit-down restaurant would be that you're not ordering at the counter, you would actually be served at your table.
Code distinguishes different classes of restaurants.
So the distinguishing characters, I hear you, is that if they have someone waiting on you at a table in the drive-through, it would be okay?
That would be an example. For example, we have Restaurants Group 2, which would be, you know, for example, a Chinese restaurant, you can go and get taken.
They serve you at the table.
Fast food is its own category, the way our code is written.
Much doesn't make sense.
If I could comment, I like this idea that they're excluding these, because if O'Reilly Auto Parts would go out and somebody else comes in using that same building, A, or B, if somebody else comes in and tears the building down and builds something, they can't build anything for that use. So it does protect the site.
Good, thank you.
And I'll just get through these as quickly as I can. We wanted to show you some images. Chris has done O'Reilly Auto Parts across the state. We've had the pleasure of working with him on several in Lee County, and just want to hit on that since 2003, this store has evolved, it's become a much cleaner, more retail-oriented operation, there's no repair associated with it, it's on-scale with a neighborhood commercial use, it's conventional retail presentation. I am going to hit on the retail hours, something with this user that we could incorporate into the conditions, as well as they are open from 7:30 a.m. to 10 p.m., and their deliveries only occur during hours of operation. So that also provides better protection for permitted uses today that could be open earlier or later than this use. There is no outdoor sales or storage also associated with the use. We believe the retail proposed is compatible with the surrounding commercial land uses, both existing and planned. This site is appropriately located for retail use, it's in the commercial future land use category, it's well under the intensity allowed in the future land use category. Staff has noted there's available public infrastructure, and it's on our arterial roadway within a commercial corridor. We also meet the extensive land development code regulations about building height, building design, buffering of dumpsters, et cetera. We also want to note that this is an appropriate transitional use as you enter into your downtown. Our office has had the pleasure of working with staff on the downtown redevelopment area. We understand this is a very important planning concept to the city and getting that underway. When you start on the north end of Old 41, you're in kind of an industrial section with burn wood and similar uses like that. As you transition to Rosemary, where the Old 41 overlay starts, it starts getting more commercial in nature, and we feel this retail use will fit in well with that transition from industrial to more commercial retail. We are not within the overlay district itself, and we're half a mile from the town center, so we didn't want to make that distinction, but we know we are in the proposed gateway, and we believe based on those elevations we showed, the pallet, the landscaping, it's going to be a nice entry to the city and very, again, retail and visually consistent with the corridor. And that star just denotes where we are in location to your boundary. Noise is a big aspect of compatibility. We believe adding this use will fully protect the surrounding neighborhood in terms of noise. Your code says outside the hours of 10 p.m. to 7 a.m., the sound level is limited to 55 dB, we'll be closed during those hours with no deliveries. So we'll be meeting that, as well as there's extensive vegetation proposed on our property. We're providing a Type B buffer between our residential uses. They have an existing wall as well as vegetation in place, so we will be very well screened, which also will attenuate noise. And so just to show you, Lindsay kind of walked you through the master concept plan, but we have been sensitive in our site design where we pushed the building kind of to the center of the site. We've got the parking along the front edge with our buffering, and then this back area is drainage easements, dry detention, open space area to provide as much separation between the building and those adjacent residences possible. So we do have approximately 135 feet to that nearest TFC-zoned property, and then 230 feet into Hawthorne. And again, in this space, we've got walls, trees on boat, as well as trees on our property. In terms of lighting, because we are within 50 feet of a residential use, our pole height will be limited to 15 feet. And again, the parking area is closest to Old 41, so that we'll be locating those poles as far away as possible. Your code also has been improved in terms of lighting in recent years to require full cutoff fixtures to avoid a light pollution. From a traffic standpoint, the site is well-served by an arterial roadway with direct access to Old 41. Your code, again, has been updated in recent years to require cross-access. We tie into the family, the Dollar General, rather, and then also have future cross-access when our neighbor is developed in the future, so that not all those trips have to get out on Old 41. So complying with those good requirements. From a visual standpoint, I don't want to beat a dead horse for dying, but we got the elevation there demonstrating the look and appearance of the building, we've screened the dumpster, and we do want to just kind of, if you haven't been able to visit the site, walk you through some of those existing buffer types with the existing Hawthorne wall, the vegetation in place as we look at our neighbors. I'm going to pass it over to Jim, who's going to...
Who's next?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. Lindsay, go for a second.
Yeah, okay.
Just to clarify, Mr. Donnelly's, or to answer Mr. Donnelly's question.
Yes, Lindsay Robin for the record here. Just wanted to clarify that currently in the permitted schedule of uses, Restaurants Group 3 is an allowable use, and Restaurants Group 3 in your code is a standard restaurant, including fast-food establishments. And then furthermore, Drive-Thru Facilities is also a permitted use for any permitted use, which means that a fast-food establishment could occur with a drive-through. And now I'll pass it over to Jim. Thank you very much.
Good morning. James Inc. for the record, Waldorf Engineering. Been a little while since I've been here, but I have testified here before. What I'm going to discuss is the conceptual engineering nature of the project. As you go through a zoning, this is an entitlement, we look at it to see if it is feasible to meet land development code standards. On that project, it's a very site-specific. We have looked at the parking, we have looked at the access, we've looked at the alignment, the ability for a delivery truck to get in and out of the site equally and easily. The stormwater management system is a traditional commercial dry storage system where we're proposing to put the majority of the dry storage in the back corner of the property, behind the dumpster, hidden from, not only from 41, but also from the participants that's there. There is a 25-foot drainage easement that where our discharge will be located to, and the drainage design will meet the South Florida Water Management Design Standards, whether it's reviewed through an ERP process with the state, or it's reviewed through the City of Benita as being exempt from the state's standards. The proposed modification 9H that we have, we're asking for an addition because strictly literal interpretation of the reading says no work will be done in the drainage easement. We're asking for the exception of our stormwater outfall pipe from our stormwater system. That's strictly the change that we're requesting in that aspect, different from the staff report. Just to touch on traffic and just traffic generation, as Lindsay stated, a fast food with drive-through is allowable, and that is the ultimate extreme traffic that can be put there, allowable today. And just to show the relative difference between the worst-case scenario and an O'Reilly Auto Parts, you can see that it's a tremendous lessening of the traffic generation of putting an auto parts store here. And if in the ITE manual, auto parts sales is its own line item, different than auto parts service, auto parts, you know, repair, gas stations, it's its own specific, auto parts sales is its own specific line item, and the numbers are very similar to a general retail store. With that, I'd just like to say from an engineering standpoint, in my professional opinion, that this project can meet all the requirements of the land development code for engineering aspects of the project. Thank you.
I will wrap up now. Thank you for your patience with us as we work through this. So in closing, the proposed addition of the auto parts store use is entirely consistent with the City of Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan. We are within the general commercial future land use category. This category explicitly allows for a wide variety of service and retail uses, which this request is. We are well below the maximum allowable floor area ratio permitted within this future land use category, and we're in agreement with staff on this point as well, but the addition of the use is consistent with your comprehensive plan, which is one of the key factors in your evaluation criteria. We believe through the testimony today, as well as our backup application materials, that the proposed auto parts store as limited through this request is compatible with the surrounding land use pattern, both existing and planned. We have it buffering in place to ensure compatibility with our residential neighbors. We've designed the site sensitively in terms of lighting impacts, locating the parking areas, and we've proposed conditions in terms of limiting the installation of any auto parts on-site so that to not impact our neighbors and have corresponding hours of operation restrictions as well to address all those aspects. And then as staff also noted, this is located on our arterial roadway, and we have all the available services and infrastructure to support the proposed use, and this is less intense than uses allowed today. In accordance with your land development code, Chapter 4, we meet all the criteria for this rezoning. There are a few areas in this where the staff report differs from our findings, but we are in agreement that this request complies with the general commercial future land use category, will meet or exceed all the performance and locational standards within the MPD, as well as within your land development code and comp plan. It's consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan, has demonstrated compatibility with the surrounding land use pattern. This request will not place significant impact upon the surrounding roadway network and actually will reduce trips compared to what could be built today. And it's been noted in the supportive protected species survey environmental materials, there's no environmental critical areas or natural resources on-site that would be impacted. This is cleared. There's no protected species within the property. While staff, we appreciate working with them, we filed this application in August of 2018, so we have been working diligently to get through this process. We appreciate their attention. We understand, based on the record, there was, you know, some concern on their part, but they did provide conditions for an approval and recommended approval of the deviation. So to that extent, we are respectfully requesting your approval as outlined in the report and made possible via those conditions. We believe the proposed use is compatible and appropriate at the subject location, the intensity and general use is entirely consistent with your comprehensive plan, will not burden infrastructure, and we are in agreement with all staff conditions and that slight modification that Jim Inc. mentioned regarding the placement of the outfall pipe in the easement. So we'll just leave you with it, that the conditions have changed since 2003 that allow this one use, the auto parts store use, to be appropriate. This is a retail in nature based on the evolution of the market. It's different than the other auto-oriented uses that were removed and has much less impacts. The Tassone MPD is built out, you know where those residential uses are, you know where their roadways, their buffers, their walls are located. Your downtown redevelopment area is well-defined in terms of its boundary. This use provides a retail use on the gateway to that area. I would say from a professional planning standpoint, the site-specific MCP is one of the most compelling things that's changed since 2003. They simply did not have that information to make this type of decision. So we have provided that to provide a specific layout of how this use will function on the site to ensure that we're meeting all your code and comp plan criteria. And then lastly, again applauding your staff, the land development code has been enhanced. Benita Springs has one of the highest standards in terms of community outreach design standards in Southwest Florida, and we will meet all the commercial building design standards, auto-oriented supplementary regulations via this application. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions or turn it over to Sarah.
I have a question, just curious, I guess, more than anything else. Riley is a national organization.
Yes, sir.
Did they do market research on this site? Yes, they determined...
My name's Chris Sulemy. I'm the developer with Alarion Investment Management. Yeah, O'Reilly is a national company. They do have a research department. They have a strategy for, they allocate their growth into different markets. So they looked at this market specifically as underserved for both them and for other auto parts users, and they looked at the location within the city they were happy with, yes.
Did they find any other sites that were compatible to their use that wouldn't require this kind of an exercise?
I'm sure there are sites, but at what price? You know, if we could get on Benita Beach Boulevard at a reasonable cost, and certainly that would be a nice site, too. This is not, this business is not quite site-specific that needs the drive-by traffic that a fast-food restaurant would, so they do have some flexibility to go off of the busiest corner to get to a more reasonable cost.
So they were aware of how many other auto parts facilities were in the city?
Yes, sir. In fact, I recently talked with them about several other cities where they're not represented, not represented, like Clueston, and they did not want to go there because of the level of competition.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The packet we got had a list of nine conditions that staff has recommended, and you didn't really go through all those one by one, but I think you included most of what was presented, the nine plus, about a page and a half of conditions. I understand that definitely the need to have the drainage outlet pipe as allowed. I think it was very, very complete, your presentation, and if you go along with all the staff's conditions, I would like to support the project.
Thank you. I apologize if it wasn't clear. We accept all of the conditions, we only listed that one because we wanted that small change to it to allow for the outfall into the drainage. Yes, and that...
Question.
Go ahead. No, go ahead, Dick.
A question concerning the engineering and the 25-year flood issue versus the 100-year flood... flood. I guess that came, that same issue came up back in 2003 when they talked about the same thing.
When you do stormwater design for a project, for the record, James, Inc., again, when you do stormwater design, you design for three different type storms. The 100-year flood storm is for the building itself and the finished floor, and by the Florida Building Code, it has to even now be plus one above that 100-year. The 25-year is for the parking and the stormwater attenuation, and that's what we design for, for quantity and discharge, is to handle that 25-year, three-day storm event.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just, you haven't touched on traffic, have you?
We did slightly. The traffic impact statement was not required in this process because it was already done at the time of original approval.
Let me throw a couple of things out to you. Traffic on Old 41, right, sometimes it's backed up from the circle all the way up to the firehouse going south, from the circle going all the way to Buffalo ships going north. This is every day. You're going to tell me that the deliveries you have and the customer base that you would like to have is not going to be affected by the traffic?
Well, and that's what we had shown, that one slide for, that Mr. Inc. testified to with regard to the dramatic decrease in traffic, that putting this use on that parcel as opposed to an allowable use, it's going to greatly decrease the amount of traffic that's going in and out, and I will open it to him.
For the record, again, James, Inc., on the traffic, as Sarah said, as part of the zoning, it's not required, but should this be approved and we move forward to the development order, the Land Development Code requires a very robust traffic study that we have to be compliant with as to how much we generate, how we generate it, where it turns, where the left turns are, XL lanes, DCL lanes, those type of issues.
And you really feel that this store belongs there on that site? You really, in your heart, believe that's where it belongs?
In my opinion...
With the problems that we're having on Old 41?
In my opinion, and I've been around for quite a while, this use is a very low-intensity use and can meet all the requirements of the Land Development Code.
You know, we've got enough used car lots and garages and everything else on that Old 41. You know, do we need another store, another auto parts store? Do we need another car lot? Do we need another garage? I mean, what are you going to make Old 41 look like?
That's beyond my level...
Well, that's not beyond, you know, our questioning.
And I will speak to that. You had mentioned several uses. Those are uses we're not asking for today. We're only asking for the retail use, and this specific use is not, you cannot find this specific use anywhere between Benita Beach Road and 41 on Old 41. As you mentioned, in the north part, and Alexis had touched on this, the north part of Old 41, there are auto part, I mean, I'm sorry, auto repair facilities, there's quite a few. There's an APA and then some independent, but once you get further south, you get to the Dollar General, and nothing south of that is, that I'm aware of, that I've seen is auto-related.
That's true.
But I can, I can state with certainty that there are no other auto parts stores in that location.
On that point, you're right, but there are other automotive-related shops south of that. Matter of fact, right across the street from Dollar General is the used car lot, right?
Right, which is just north of us.
Keep going down Old 41 to the south side. You know, trying to revitalize it, and yet we're going to put all these, I hate to use the word rinky-dink, but that's what it's going to look like. Old 41 is going to look like a rinky-dink section. We don't want that. It doesn't belong there. That's my feeling. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
I'm kind of looking back at the, your effort to discern what it was they intended in 2003 by adding this. When were the, did already exist on this road the car wash and the gas stations? Were they already there?
2003.
Yeah. I mean, I don't go back that far, so I have to ask.
They were there already.
Because it seems to me, when you have a hearing like this and you're trying to change something, you're looking at what you have and you don't want any more of, and that's why I think when you have not a very careful definition of what this auto thing applies to, I think by just logic, you can say, okay, they don't want any more of what was there. So, I think that was a fairly reasonable description of what maybe the 2003 amendment meant, or change meant. However, when they use a general term, everything fits under it, and that's the problem, I think legally, that we face in the failure to say the following kinds of auto things are not allowed, and instead using the general word auto. I think we, as a board here, are faced with the problem of applying the law that we have to either take your word for what they meant back there, based on your effort to discern from a not very clear record, or we have to be rather more exact and say, this is auto-related, it said not auto-related. And as I've said so many times here, our job as zoning board is to apply the existing law, and it is the council's job, if the council wishes to say that, okay, we don't see it as that way, and we find this comfortable, either to amend the law or for them to interpret it in a different way. So, I think we are put in a difficult position as the zoning board with the way the wording was used in the 2003 amendment, and I just want you to know that's where I'm coming from. I hear what you're saying. It makes sense to me logically that when you're making a new rule and you're trying to stop what's going on, like gas stations and car washes and car repairs and used car lots, that that's what you intend, but that may be stretching more than I can. I have to think about it a little bit.
I'll add just a little bit, because this is a reoccurring issue, but under the case law in Florida, all land development regulations are considered a derogation of property rights. And under the Constitution of Florida and the laws protecting property rights, when it comes to drafting regulations, it is assumed that the legislative body, in this case, the city council, knew what it was doing when it drafted them, and therefore, when there are ambiguities in the interpretation of a law with respect to property rights, the interpretation by the reviewing bodies should be viewed in the light most favorable to the property owner, when those interpretations would otherwise be a restriction on property rights. That's the current state of the law in Florida.
So, that where ambiguity exists.
So, where an ambiguity exists, so if the issue is...
We should consider the property owner's rights more than trying to discern what it might have been in the...
You don't, you shouldn't be reaching for an interpretation that is not otherwise self-evident. You know, they should be strictly interpreted, and if their plain meaning is not clear, then the interpretation should favor the property owner when those regulations would otherwise take away property rights.
And the one point I wanted to add to that discussion, as well as the question that Mr. Kurlander asked earlier, is while there is not, while Mary had said, there is not a definition of what an auto parts store is in your Land Development Code, we are defining it as to what we would like to see it by placing the conditions on it that we're agreeing to. We're specifically saying all retail use will happen inside, there will be no service bays, it will look no different than another retail outlet. The only thing we're asking to do, in addition to a regular retail store, is the minor installation of light bulbs, windshield wipers, and batteries. So, we're defining what we see an auto parts store as, and it's a rather limited definition compared to all of the other auto part and auto-oriented uses that could go there.
Is there anything further from the applicant?
I did want to say, we do not have anything further to present at this time, but I would like to reserve time for rebuttal. Thank you.
The city councillor.
I can go through my presentation, or I can answer any questions you may have. It will be very repetitive of what we just discussed, but I can clarify more if you have further questions throughout.
I'd sure like to have you clarify why you're recommending denial, okay? That's where I really need to have more.
Sure. So, as you'll see from our staff report, one of the criteria for a plan development is that you have to satisfy what the neighbor compatibility, neighborhood compatibility would be, and this is not one of those uses that would be expected from the current neighbors because it's not on the plan development list. And so, therefore, we found it, it wasn't entirely compatible. We wanted to see, today they did a more thorough job of explaining what has changed since 2003, but from what we were provided in their narrative, it was not provided to show that much has changed from those 2003 regulations compared to what council broadly stated in 2003 for the approval of the plan development.
May I just?
Please.
Okay, so, what, I think if I caught the beginning of that, what your concern is, is that the compatibility be so that the existing neighborhood around it is comfortable with it, and it's not doing something that would go against what the list of permitted uses were. And if that's the rule, it seems to me, they've done a fairly good job of showing, I mean, this could be a beauty store, you know, have all these products. They're basically saying this is a retail store, and it's different from the kind of auto uses that might have been the, or would most likely have been the intent of the original drafters. But most of all, if their neighborhood meetings, which, I mean, I didn't see any exact statements from the people, in which sometimes we get, but that the neighbors were concerned about something being developed there that adds to the traffic, and one of their major concerns is restaurants. I bet you there are going to be more restaurants downtown because that's what you put in those fancy new things they're building. So, I think the neighbors are going to find some of that coming anyway, but to the extent that it matters that what you found by following our process, which is, ask the people who are there what bothers them and what doesn't, this would be a preferred use to say putting McDonald's there. I don't mean to pick on McDonald's, but it's the one that comes forth. I guess that means they're important or something. But at any rate, so that's the kind of thing I'm looking for, to try to figure out how I can apply the law to the kind of exceptions that you're wanting. And so, between the notion that we interpret in, when there is ambiguity in the favor of the property owner, and to say that we're concerned about the compatibility with the neighborhood, those two things seem to me to at least give a basis that, for the, for what they're requesting. But I guess I'd like to hear more, if you have more on that, as to why, is it just because it isn't in this list, or how do you feel about the compatibility with the neighborhood?
So, essentially, we found that the retail use wasn't necessarily the intensive portion, but because there are ancillary installations for this type of use, it's not strictly retail.
So, that the windshield wipers, the headlights, and the battery are the issue?
Yes. And for that, we found it incompatible compared to what is allowed.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Wester.
I also was concerned about the request to deny.
Yeah.
However, you said if it is approved, you want to allow these, or ask for these conditions to be a part of the approval. Now, if the conditions, which are voluminous, by the way, if they are approved as acceptable to the applicant, would you be in favor of passing this particular presentation?
It would be at your pleasure, but as long as those conditions were enforced, yes, we could be amenable to approval.
Thank you.
So, in addition to the compatibility question, there's also the question that the city council moved this specific use in 2003, and I think you put some weight on that.
Yes.
In doing so, doesn't the applicant have a point that 17 years have elapsed, things have changed, the nature of the business has changed, the neighborhood has changed, and don't they have a point to that? I mean, in the past, we've taken the view that, for example, in 2015, the city council passed something, and we felt that that was dispositive, and we didn't have any room to maneuver because it was so close in time.
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't call it contemporaneous, but pretty close in time. Here you have 17 years that have elapsed, and the applicant has made, I think, a reasonably persuasive case that things have changed. So, don't we have more, my question for you is, don't we, as a board, have more latitude, given the lapse of time?
You do. There's validity to their argument as well. What we would say is that because of what council said in 2003, and the major changes to the downtown and their efforts on improving it, we can only interpret that their intent was to provide it as a gateway to the Old 41, and that this was not one of the uses they wanted to see there, and so we were enhancing that argument.
Mr. Dolmire would like to be heard.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, all right.
You make a very good point. The reason why that was included as information in your packets and not something that altered our recommendation is simply from the fact that I've watched enough legal dramas to say that question has been asked and answered. And while the city council can state that the conditions we proposed and the information the applicant has provided is more than enough to recommend and approve the use, we didn't feel it was our place as staff to supplement their policy decision with our recommendation. So, if this board or this city council determines to approve this use, we have provided you a vehicle in which to do that, no pun intended. However, because that use was specifically excluded, we just did not feel it was our place to all of a sudden recommend our decision over the council's decision.
So, you're taking the position that you're bound by that, the removal of this from, in 2003?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Could you say what the exact language was of removing auto-related? I know it's somewhere in here, but I can't remember.
That language, I think, has been lost to history, but I believe that we did call, in the notes, former mayor Ben Nelson had made that point and made that motion. We called to ask his insight, and unfortunately, he remembered as much as we did, so we were not able to get any more information from that.
But what I want, but the wording must have been something that they used to withdraw. What was the...
The idea that he provided, which sounds reasonable, but I can only say it sounds reasonable because we don't know, was that because this was the gateway to downtown, auto-related uses were something that concerned...
So, the word is auto-related?
That was the term he used with us, and that was the term that I believe was used in the minutes, but there was not a verbatim transcript that we found. So, I do not know if that was the exact motion or if that was just memory.
The wording from the minutes is on the board, if you'd like to look at that.
Of course, I can't see that.
From the packet, too.
Yes, it's also in the staff report.
So, I think one of the terms that you just used, and I think we saw in here, was gateway to the city. At that time, 17 years ago, was it considered a gateway to the city? And I think that maybe their intent was, we don't want this to, this stretch of road to look like 41. We don't want it to be a strip kind of situation.
Correct, and I think you probably have a little bit of insight of this as well, but if you remember, when the city was preparing its initial comp plan, there was discussion, at least considerable thought, I won't say it was universal, but consistent thought, that the bamboo parcel, or Imperial Landing, or Crossing, whatever we're calling it now, was going to be the most intensive property in the city, and we'd build out from there, and intensity would decrease as you drove north or south. This property, or generally the Rosemary intersection with Old 41, was and is generally considered the very north end of downtown. When Tassone was approved as a mixed-use plan development, there was a lot of unknown. It was a very large vacant piece of property. There was a lot of discussion as to what could go there. If you look at the list of uses, it's large. It was not a very defined project at the time. It has since, as you pointed out, several members of this board have pointed out, that it's become a known quantity. You know where the residential units are, what they look like, what proximity, what the view corridors are going to be. Those answers have been provided to us, that we have now that we didn't have them. So, because of that, and because we have, we're still refining our downtown standards 17 years later, we are able to put a list of conditions together at this board, and ultimately, the city council feels this use is appropriate. However, as I said before, because this use, among others, was specifically stricken from the request in 2003, regardless of how long ago that was... the request in 2003, regardless of how long ago that was, we didn't want to plant our recommendation over that specific policy decision. So, yes.
So it really, it really comes down to what do the words "auto-related" mean?
I can see that point. I would simply look at this as something that it was specific enough to strike this use, among several others.
I think the other thing that may be considered, since we're going on about what's changed in 17 years, is that the city council, and yourselves, everyone's been moving towards the idea of the form-based codes, where we're looking at intensities, and really just more of the aesthetic and the outward appearances of buildings and their impacts on neighbors, and going to Ms. Crespo's argument that this is not really an auto parts store in the sense that there are bays and there are operations going back and forth. It's just retail, in which the retail component is auto parts, and you look at that trend of the city towards.
It's a function-based.
Exactly, in the old downtown area, then, then basically, we're looking at the shell. Yes.
It's the same, it's selling stuff. So if another store like the Dollar Store wanted to go there, presumably there wouldn't be any problem. We wouldn't be here. And so, and that's why I'm trying to get the notion of what 17 years ago "auto-related" meant, and what it might mean today. And, you know, since we recommend, I think we can do the best we can to interpret it and say whatever we do in the end to the board, this is why we did it. And if you feel differently, that's what your power as the legislative board is. So I mean, two things that you've said that make, seem to give us more latitude than many situations we're in, like for instance, very clear things that were done three years ago that we said, you can't put this here, and we all know what that case is just recently. But it seems to be the two things, that the notion of how you interpret ambiguity in the law, and then the notion that 17 years have passed, and I guess add finally, the notion of function-based use which we're moving towards. So that's where I'm grappling.
Yeah, I mean, the problem is just the term "auto-based" is really, could be questionable. It could have been automotive-centric, as far as like, is it, you know, an auto parts store? It could have been automotive in the sense that it's driven by traffic concerns in an area where we're trying to promote more walkability, you know? That's why you have to look at it in the lens of what does it actually say, and then what are the impacts on the people that are affected by that language?
Mr. Chairman. Please. You know, 17 years ago, several of us were here at that time. We've seen the area evolve from a small village to a small city now, medium-sized city, maybe you'll call it. If we had, if they had excluded, they would not have excluded dollar stores 17 years ago, because that was a retail that wasn't, at least in this area, wasn't even thought of. Now look at it today, and there are other examples as well. So when we think about "auto-related," auto parts could have been, I think, I think that whole business has evolved in the last 17 years as well. People are now doing more, buying more accessories. It's more of an accessory store than it is an auto parts store, although the garages go there to buy various parts, I suppose.
Never broken in my car today.
There you go. I think, I think staff has done a good job. I think your presentation was good, and I don't, I just, I would support this. My opinion. Is there anything further from the city? Do you wish to have any rebuttal?
I think we're good.
But this time, before we begin our deliberations, I would ask if anyone would like to make a public comment about this application that we could take into consideration in our deliberations. Hearing done, what is the wish of the board?
I make a motion that we deny the applicant's request.
There's a motion to deny the applicant's request. Is there a second? Hearing no second, the motion fails.
I make a motion to approve the applicant's request and to move forward.
With the conditions?
With the conditions cited by staff, the nine conditions.
A second to the motion.
Before you vote on that, may I just have a clarification that it's with the conditions as we've requested the change to that one?
Oh, yeah.
The outfall, yes.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Thank you.
With the conditions and deviation 12.
And our change to the one deviation.
The outfall on the.
Correct.
On the retention. Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second to the motion.
Discussion.
Well, as I've made clear, I mean, I'm grappling a bit, I'm prepared to vote in favor of this, but I think we should include in it, as we have been trying to do to the city council, that if they believe we have interpreted this incorrectly, and that the 17 years of passage and the changed nature of this, and the fact that this is retail, is not sufficient for them to deal with the word "auto" in it, that's of course their prerogative. But I think that there, I would agree, I think the case is very strong, and I really and truly cannot see the difference of putting this there or another dollar store in terms of the way it operates. I truly can't. So I would have a hard time, you know, other than the word "auto," I would suggest come up with a different word, "mobility store" or something, and you wouldn't be in the problem. So I'm prepared to support it, as long as we make sure in the report that is given to the council that they understand, that at least I feel that way.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to have, for me to withdraw my motion? I'll ask council. To withdraw my motion and make that an additional, what you're, an additional motion?
Well, I don't think that, I don't think that must be in the motion.
No?
I don't think you have.
No, that is, that is what we want to provide, is to our reasoning, our effort to deliberate it, and I think that's in the presentation that is given to the board.
Is our reasoning.
Yeah. I think it's very reasonable. Personally, I've come to that mainly because of the things that you've told me, and the things that you've told me, that now I can.
Mr. Worcester.
We can't include that, but I'd like to suggest it be a part of the minutes of this meeting.
Yes.
Anything further? Would the clerk call the roll? On the motion to approve, subject to the conditions, deviations, and the applicant's exception to that one deviation.
Committee member, when?
Yes.
Chairman Kerlander?
Yes.
Committee member Brunswick?
Yes.
Committee member Donley?
Yes.
Committee member Worster?
Yes.
Committee member Nserpi?
No.
Committee member Craig?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you very much. There are two other items before you leave that I want to take out. The first is that, this is the last meeting for Jim Worcester, unfortunately, for us.
Yes, very unfortunate.
Probably fortunately for him, but that's another story. But he's been an extraordinarily valued member of this board, and I would ask that we just pay him our appreciation. Thank you so much, Jim. Final words, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. I appreciate your listening to some of my comments on some of the hearings, and some were passed, some were not passed. But thank you, and I enjoyed my tenure.
Thank you so much. So there's one final item. Some time ago, Mr. Donley came to me with an idea that we could use when we take up the land development code and revision, which I hope will be shortly. But because it was a policy matter, I approached, and not anything that would likely come up before this board formally, except in its capacity as overseeing the revision of the land development code, I did speak to the mayor and say, hey, we're kind of treading on your turf here. I want you to know we're looking at this. But if, I'd like you to hear what Mr. Donley has to say about accessory dwelling units. Very interesting idea.
Well, I think that the handout that you've got is, that was prepared by staff, did an excellent job. I don't know who was the author. You're the author? You did a great job. But this idea, you know, I'm a complete, I thought I understood a little bit about city planning, but I've discovered I know very little. And I was taken by an article that I read about the city of Minneapolis had voted to end the single-family lot subdivisions. And the reason they did that was because that they're facing a severe shortage of housing, especially ways to address the lower-income level of housing. And they took a strong look at their planning at that point, and implemented several new requirements in their zoning regulations that, in order to increase affordable housing in the community, they permitted duplexes, triplexes, and small backyard houses, which were called accessory dwelling units. So in our naivety, we had a meeting, and we put together some thoughts that we had about, to us, that was this, at least the two of us, it was kind of a new concept, this ADU. And we felt that if someone had a single-family lot, they might have the ability to add unto that their residence, or create a separate freestanding residence, as long as it complied with all setbacks and parking and that kind of thing. And that they could, because their basis of creating this unit would be low, since they've already, financially, they've already, they own the land, so if they were to refinance something to build a freestanding rental structure, that the cost basis would be low. Therefore, their carrying costs in terms of a mortgage would be low, and therefore, that could translate into lower rent that they could charge, and in doing so, could help provide rental units in the city with no increase to the infrastructure, et cetera, that would address certainly those, that income level that dealt with first responders, teachers, and that type of thing. So we thought that was a pretty neat idea, and because it seemed to be a win-win for everybody. It was a win-win for the homeowner because he could create a, increase the value of his property by adding a rental unit to it. It's a win-win for the city, they're going to increase their tax base, and it was a win-win for the rental community and the people, the teacher who now might find an affordable place for him to rent, him or her to rent. So we organized, we talked to John Dahmer and his staff, and we had a meeting where we proceeded to make the pitch that, very initially, that this was a win-win deal for the city, the homeowner and the tenant, and we were told, you don't have to convince us of anything. You know, we're way ahead of you on this. We're familiar with this. The city of, the state has authorized this kind of use, the ADU, and there are many communities already in the state who have implemented ordinances that allow for this thing. And I think the presentation that was given to you today really summarizes what's going on in this, in this area. Plus, we were given, at the meeting we had, another piece of information that was done by AARP. This was done 20 years ago. This set up sort of a basis and provided a model code for communities to use if they wanted to adapt this feature.
Excuse me, Mr. Donley. I don't want to, but we didn't receive a packet.
It's in the back, I missed it. It's in the back of this presentation, and I thought it was just part of this, which I only had last night to read, so I totally missed it. And I, you know, this is, to me, it was the beginning of this, way back in my time, was the, what they would call the inland, in-law apartment, or your old folks apartment, and now it's your young kids are coming and living in the basement, and this, so that I, to me, in terms of building community support from it, this, you've got both ends of the spectrum, you know, your kids and your parents, that make for a far more receptive community attitude towards something like this, which you could, I mean, as long as it's rented, I assume you could rent to anyone, but I would definitely like to read this, but I'm not prepared very well to respond because I totally missed it, for which I apologize.
Let me tell you what I think the elephant in the room is. This is a great idea, I'm with, here's the elephant in the room. If you did this, are you increasing density and giving developers a second shot at a single-family lot?
Can't you?
And if so, couldn't they put, the idea here is to have some affordable rents, but isn't it possible that you wind up with some highfalutin rent and?
Can't you get around that by making this be something that the individual property owner could do, once you own the property, that you could then do that, as opposed to adding to what developments can be?
You could do that.
And it seems to me that's where your support is going to be for that in the community, is that here we exist, we've got a half-acre lot, or an acre lot, or what do we have? We need to put a small, you know, bedroom, kitchen, living room for our, and believe me, I've got my mother an American house, and I want to tell you, the cost is incredible. If you could do something like this, you're going to have a tremendous receptivity to it, as we all face this problem of who expected your parents to be alive at 100, like my mother is. And that's becoming, you know, much and much more common than 90s, and the coming into hundreds is one of the biggest growing cohorts, you know, decades of our, in our communities. So I just think this is an exciting idea. I just want to read more about it.
I'd like to chime in. I think this is very refreshing. As a pastor of a church, I hear this from our younger families. It is almost totally impossible now to survive with the rent. And a little closer to home, I have a son who's 28, three kids. His rent's going up to $1,600 in Fort Myers now, because he had to move out of Bonita. Now he's moving more east, $1,600, starting in January for a three-bedroom, because he has three children. And that's now going to, half his salary is going towards rent. Those are the issues that I hear over and over and over again. So it's a critical issue, and I think this right here is very refreshing, that for the first time, we're addressing something like this. Because it's getting, it's getting critical. He's looking at moving out and others. So, because they just can't survive here.
The councilwoman.
My hands are up to you, Richards. You did a wonderful job.
Councilwoman has something.
Chairman, and council greetings, since it's only staff and.
Madam, could you please speak on the record?
Come forward, come forward.
We're in.
You don't have to. Let her come forward.
I raised my hand!
We recognized you.
I wore a car. Councilwoman. But the other thing is, my neighbors just said to me, we have this beautiful home up north and a lovely, you know, rental apartment next door. We were thinking, why don't we rent the little apartment and rent our big house? So it's even for us to live in the little house and make sure the neighbor that we're renting to our son, maybe, and kids, keep it nice, and, you know, you have a vested interest. But I'm just saying, we could be in that position.
That's my point.
Thank you.
We're all in that position.
You know, the downside here, we're going to move into this thing, and we're going to charge $10,000 a month for the big house. What have we accomplished?
Well, you've accomplished the fact that if you can no longer use this big space, it's going to be used by someone, it exists, that you have provided for yourself a way short of having to spend $4,500 a month, which is what it costs to go into these places, for you to live where you can manage it now, and you can't manage the big house. The one wrinkle I see here that we'll have to address in this is gated communities, and how, how you're going to deal in those things. And maybe you just say that this is not, that the gated communities have their own rules for that, and it doesn't apply in this.
We, we discussed that.
But I think that's going to be the, okay, that's going to be one issue, I think.
We discussed that, and what we thought would be appropriate would be to do a pilot test in a neighborhood where you'd have some immediate impact and benefit.
Yeah.
You could do it in one area, according to the, to the city. And you avoid, you avoid, because that is a big question you're raising.
You always want to know where the resistance is located. You always want to know where the resistance is likely to come from.
Yeah, exactly, right.
Circuit that before you go, but...
Yeah.
This has tremendous, interesting potential.
It does.
Well worth looking into, and I promise I will read every word, and I'm embarrassed that I totally missed it, but...
I think it's a breath of fresh air, and to an ongoing problem, that those of us who have been here, we have our properties, we were able to buy at a time that we are, but I'm looking at the younger generation right now, they are just struggling right now.
I second that, as, as a realtor, I hear constantly, you know, our kids would love to move down here, but they just can't afford to be here. There's just, and it's not here, it's the whole, the whole district, the whole area. Great, great idea, and I want to read it.
No, I mean, again, please, if you have a chance, take a look at it, take a look at it, most of the sources are cited, if you want to do some independent investigation for yourself, but most of the things you guys have discussed, again, we touch on in the broader brushstrokes here, but a lot of the information that's available in the other municipalities, the counties, the cities, in the state and out, have really done a pretty thorough job kind of vetting those out. Again, there are ways to address the density concerns, there are ways to use district regulations to kind of limit where things can go, and further pare that down, there are certain areas where you can exclude the option, so if you have a barrier island, for example, where you don't want to increase density, maybe that's not an option there, maybe they have to count towards density there. There's a lot of ways to kind of vet it out and go through it. What we did give you guys, again, was the broad brushstrokes, kind of three good examples of cities in the state that have kind of taken this forward, and really kind of been leaders in that process, copies of their code sections that kind of addressed that, as well as a copy of our existing one, and the county. We do currently provide that option on specific zoning categories, our TFT family zoning lots, but outside of that, you really don't have that as an option. One of the examples, folks like to cite often are the big kind agricultural lots, but those have to be designed in a way that they can be split eventually. So there are some restrictions and some challenges moving forward with it, but it's a very viable opportunity for a lot of folks. Like I said, it helps to age in place, again, for caregivers, for the boomerang millennial kids coming back home that can't afford a rent. I mean, there's, it's, it isn't necessarily a silver bullet for everything, but I think it would address a lot of the issues that we see as a community.
It would appeal to so many different people, a different caregiver thing just occurred to me, you have a place where you'd like to stay living, but you'd like to have a caregiver full-time, you don't want them right in the same house on top of you. Imagine if you have the room to be able to do that, what a wonderful advantage that would be.
It gives you an option, to as opposed to having to, to take out an equity line later on in life to help, you know, fund a retirement you didn't expect to be around for necessarily, or to have to go get a reverse mortgage, for example. You have the benefit of being able to rent out this unit, or maybe the principal structure, and you occupy that, which would give the opportunity again to kind of extend out that retirement option a little further, and have the financial means to enjoy your retirement as well. It touches everybody.
Looking for the rent, but looking at what on earth am I going to do with my parents, or my twenty-eight-year-old kid who can't afford a, a place to live? This, this, to me, is the kind of innovative, wonderful thing, I really give you great kudos for starting this, because this is what we ought to be doing, the world is changing, we have lots of different problems facing, and we can't use all the old solutions that are dealing with, we're living too long, and we're having kids who just don't, can't, in the economic world we're in, can't afford those kind of things, like we all did, buy our first house when we were, well, I was twenty-six, but you know, people bought them a lot younger than they do now.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to suggest that you, as chairman, appoint a committee to maybe look into this, create maybe a possible workshop, if you will, and, and work, and in that workshop, identify areas of the city where we might try this, or at least suggest a council, a trial.
So before we get, get to a workshop, I think the, your idea of a committee is an excellent thing, and there is authority in the chair to do that, and I would appoint Mr. Donley, who's done the work, Pastor Winn, Craig, Member Craig, to be that committee, to work with the city in preparing a proposal. That proposal may or may not include a workshop, and, but I want to, the second thing I want to do is to address the councilwoman. We are treading on policy areas that normally we don't have authority to do. I spoke to the mayor, and he was comfortable with us examining this, and that's what we're doing, and so if you happen to report back that you were here, and so on, it's, we are cognizant of, you know, our limitations, and what we can and can't do, but this is part of a bigger thing, but we could move this pretty quickly, if this, because I can sense the enthusiasm here.
I'm going to suggest a sale, selling point to the council. The council has an incredibly broad set of things it has to deal with, and just doesn't have time to do this kind of investigation, and that's precisely what a group like ours, which is meant to be advisory to the council, should be doing, not just the little individual cases, but how can we maybe in the future do something better? So if you want a sales pitch for it, there's, there's something that might help.
So I would ask, Mr. Donley, that you convene the committee prior to the meeting to our December seventeenth, and report back, so we can move this along, to, as to what your plan for moving forward is. Could you, do you think you could do that by December seventeenth?
We're all going to be in town, are we?
I'm going to be in town, but I think we can talk about how we're going to go about it, but it's the holiday season, I don't know about you, but I've got, you know, not only my mom, but all sorts of people coming, and I'm leaving the eighteenth, so I'm happy to meet and have us go over how we could proceed.
We can carve out, what, an hour meeting?
Yeah, I could certainly, a couple hours, I mean, I could...
Two hours, I think, two hours.
It's going to take that long to think about the things, but I want to read this first.
Would that meeting with the four members require notice?
Yes.
Yes.
That, that really complicates setting up a quick meeting.
Well, well, all that, all that will be required is we post notice somewhere at City Hall, it doesn't have to be noticed.
Yeah, this is just a posting, and it's forty-eight hours, isn't it? I don't think it's two weeks.
You'll be fine.
And it really wouldn't matter if someone came and watched and wanted to...
Yeah, we're not deciding, nothing being decided. And I think, but your point is well taken, your point is well taken. Okay, so, again, thank you, Jim, for your years of service here, they are invaluable, and you will be missed, I promise you. And with your permission, I'd like to be able to pick up the phone and call you for your wise...
We can talk now, can't we?
We can.
The sunshine law doesn't apply anymore, does it? We may all call you, and all call you.
Is there anything further to come before the board? Hearing done, the meeting is adjourned.